City Council Work Session. This work session is Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four thirty, in the Thomas J. Smith Council City, or Thomas J. Smith Council Chaver City Hall. Uh, this is the proposed regular agenda for September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. First up would be a proclamation, uh, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Anything on that? Okay, nothing. Uh, number two is a couple of celebrations of ten-year awards. Bruce Workman Battalion Chief and Colin Wilson, street sewer maintenance worker. He's been here forever. I'm not so sure we didn't build a place around him. Uh, third, proclamation of retirement for Police Chief Dennis Kramer. And then fourth will be a congratulations to the graduates of the Third Annual Citizens Academy. And then fi- number five will be a public hearing considerations of plans and specifications for the two thousand and twenty Tiger Grant Roadway Improvements, Main Street and Jefferson Street Project, and the two thousand and twenty Tiger Grant Riverfront Revitalization Project. Are you here to speak about that now, or are we doing something else with you? No? Yeah. Okay, Leo, when you're ready. When we said Tiger Grant, that's you.
I thought we were doing proclamations first.
No, we're just reading through those. We don't practice those. Holy cats, is that all the stuff for us?
This is, uh, these are the, these are the plans and specifications. These, these are for the road projects and as for the river.
Wow.
All right, Leo Foley with Beanster and Kim.
Welcome, Leo.
Thank you. So, some of this presentation you've seen, some of it you might see again, but hopefully, uh, we'll get to the highlights here.
Not working?
All right.
Eric, the little clicky stuff.
The light part works, but I can't get it to move. Okay, so here's what we want to talk about. What's the project area? What's current conditions? What's the status? Then look at some nice renderings, talk about the, uh, cost and the phasing of the project, then the construction schedule, and then all of the things that are gonna happen during construction that are important. Whoops. Okay, so study area. I think everybody's very well aware, Jefferson Street, Main Street, and the riverfront. Not gonna spend much time. This is kind of what you have for the streets now. This is what we saw when we first got here and started taking a look at things. Here's the riverfront, and you can see kind of what we had as a master plan. And then in the bottom, you can see in the purple area is what was done with the flood protection project. So that kind of shows the first phase of the riverfront was already completed. One other thing I, I wanted to point out on this slide is, again, that's just a riverfront. Shows a parking lot that got, um, basically paved, paved over with asphalt as part of the riverfront, as part of the levee or the flood wall protection project. Okay, so these are the, the larger set over there. Though, the, that's the Jefferson and Main Street plans. As you can see from the front page, that's a DOT format, very crowded with things on there, signed off by the right people, including your city engineer, has been reviewed by the Iowa DOT and the federal DOT and approved. So that's where we needed to be as of today, that if we didn't have that approved, with the NEPA completed and the railroad agreements, they were threatening to take away federal money for the project. The mayor and a number of other people helped, including some of your congressional staff, and I think they did an unbelievable job helping, because all that stuff fell into place just when it was needed. So this is just showing you on Jefferson Main, kind of the main phasing for the project. The, the main phasing is, this is Main Street, this is Jefferson Street. So Phase One is Main, Phase Two is Jefferson. You can see the colorization differences up here. These are what we call divisions. The reason we put divisions in there is because when we looked at our cost estimate, we were at twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars, and there was only twenty or about twenty-one, twenty to twenty-one, and I'll go over these numbers. So we needed to make sure that the DOT wouldn't just throw the bids away. There's not enough money, we throw them out. So if you put divisions in, it gives you a chance to make some decisions on what do you want to keep, what don't you want to keep. And it also, we spread out the, the projects. You can see on that plan set, it talks about a letting date in, uh, October. That is, you're out for bids now, that is true. But in October, that makes, we can look at these bids, and this one is the bigger of the two. So I just wanted you to see that. This is going back to some of the earlier renderings on this one, and it's more or less just showing you what your typical cross-section was gonna look like on this. So changing the parking, changing with the, um, drainable pavers, changing lighting in trees. Same thing on Main Street, lots of changes. The, this river is over on the right side of this, this thing. We're talking about on South Main, a rail, a, a trail here, green infrastructure, and a lot more greenery than what you've been seeing. Main Street on the north section, the north side of the railroad. Um, got the turning lanes and things like that in there. I will tell you that these pavers were removed on Main Street. We kept them on Jefferson, but again, as a cost-saving routine, we decided on Main, it's low enough, let's remove them there. These are the plans for the riverfront, I mean, yeah, for the riverfront improvements. Those other plans are about three hundred and fifty-six pages. This is a small one with a hundred pages, but still lots of detail. And this one is a very different project, as you can imagine, than the, than the DOT is used to seeing. So a lot of this is very foreign to the DOT on, on some of this type of, type of work. Again, signed off by everybody, including your city engineer. Okay, this one's not quite as clean as a phasing drawing. I think I showed it to you before, but there is a Phase One, Phase Two right here. Phase One is the north section, Phase Two is the south section. Some divisions within the phases. You'll see in the renderings your, um, your spray pad and shelter are in here. Uh, behind the auditorium are a lot of improvements. That's all Phase One. Then Phase Two is primarily the boat ramp and how you access and get around the new boat ramp. Nice docking system for the boat ramp, and it also includes here kind of a roadway that, a better travel way between the two areas. There are some river, um, docking dolphins to help with docking of large boats. There's three of those. That's part of the, the Phase One. We also put in this parking lot, so everything's designed. They'll be bidding on it, everything will be fine. But we separated that as a separate division, and this one where I showed you part of it's already paved, we separated as a separate division, because we thought that's a smart area to look for, for some cost savings, if we have to. Hopefully, we get good bids, and that's not a big issue. Okay, so now I kind of wanted to go through a few of the renderings. Um, I'm not gonna talk tremendously. You saw the cross-sections, but I think you're gonna see a lot of patterns on the concrete, and I think it's gonna actually, um, really, really dress the area up and look very good. You can see the bump outs with the new trees, the new lighting. All of this stuff, I'll talk about a little later, on how do we get from this set of plans to a contractor, and then what actually gets put out there. There's actually a formal process for how all that works. Another one showing, again, some of the angled parking as opposed to what you have now. Angled on one side and parallel on the other. Main Street, and again, I don't have a lot of great things, but again, the intersections will be done. Um, we did do a couple of different things on Main Street. On South Main, we added sewer separation on almost all South Main, and put a, put a force main in on South Main, which meant we're gonna be excavating out a lot of South Main. So instead of putting it back in asphalt, we changed over to concrete, because if you're gonna be putting concrete patches on almost the entire thing, it became almost a wash in cost, so it really wasn't a cost savings to go to asphalt. We did look at that extensively to try to, try to get there. Again, this is just showing you the trail and the greenery that, that'll be showing up in South Main. That trail will be going down South Main, down, uh, the alley there, um, on Market, and onto the riverfront.
How wide is that trail?
Ten foot wide. This is showing kind of the, one of the main features that we've talked about quite a bit. Um, the splash pad with the shade structure that'll be between the two buildings, and kind of nestled in to where some of the, the work is now. So that's the, one of the main, that's a big feature. Other features of this will be, and I don't have a rendering of it, but, um, um, behind the auditorium, there'll be a small stage, and there'll be, it'll be kind of a green space landscaped up for sitting and having small-type events around there. The rest of it is more parking and making sure the parking works right with everything in the roads and the access. The other thing on this one is that, I told you, the dolphins or these, you, you already have one. They're the wood dolphins that have pilings down, and they come in a big circle. There's usually between six and twelve of these dol- these, these pilings. They go down into the river bottom, and then the big boats come and tie up off of those. You have one right now, and you're gonna have three more. That's gonna allow you to have the Viking as well as the Queen at the same time. Not that you'll always have that, but you will have the potential to be able to do that. Okay, I showed you this one. Can you blow this one up for me, Eric? So this, this is the one that shows that you've got... There it is. Oh, almost.
Just got a strobe light.
Yeah. Okay, so it, it shows that you have about, of projects that are in your budget, which is about... Can you just blow, try to blow it up one more time? I think you had it. I can't read it. I can there. Twenty million. So, that one says must-do projects, twenty million, twenty point eight million. And you have about twenty-one million. Then it has down here, total project cost, twenty-two point three million? Is that right, Eric? Okay. So you can see, there's a gap, and that gap is basically parking lots and the first or the most northern block of Main Street. Is it right now where the gap is? If everything comes in exactly like engineers say, if things come in lower, then we can be, take more. If things come in higher, we have to cut. So that's kind of how we're at. Um, I know we've had a bad bit on, uh, flood protection. We're hoping for a good bit here. I will tell you, these are a little bit easier to estimate. There's a lot of streets projects running around. There's a lot of street contractors. So hopefully, we'll get good bids here. Okay, this one needs a little more ex- explanation also. The DOT, as well as V and K and Jesse, your city engineer, kind of thought we needed more time for Jefferson Street. The Jefferson Street with all the work being done was gonna take a little bit more time, so we allowed them to start about halfway through when they were done with Main Street. But these first four months, we said they could not close the road for any reason. So that just gives them preparatory work, because I think we had told the people on Jefferson that we wouldn't start until two thousand and twenty-two. Well, they will be doing some work, but they won't be closing the streets and all that until twel- two thousand and twenty-two. And then they'll be doing one block at a time, trying to keep the businesses open. It won't be pleasant. Um, construction is difficult on these kind of projects, but we just got to have patience and get through it and hopefully, um, do everything needed to make, uh, make everything work. Can you go to the next one? No? Probably when I told you to raise it. Okay. This one I want to talk to you a little bit about is construction activities. This is, so, so right now, as far as we're concerned, design is done. Now you move to the construction, what they call construction engineering, the construction phase of the project. Once we get a bid and you get a low, you get a contractor, first thing you do is you set up a pre, pre-construction meeting. Those generally are between the engineers, the city, and the DOT. And that's a meeting more or less making sure their contracts, their bonds, their insurance, all that's in place, making sure everybody kind of has a, a understand, the same understanding of the plans and specs. You start to look at their schedules. You start to look at their, um, subcontractors, who's gonna do work for them. After that's done, then we do this pre-project neighborhood-type meeting. And that's where we get, we bring in business owners, the chamber, the partners, uh, other, and other stakeholders, and we start to talk about what's gonna happen when, and now you've got a contractor on board. And that makes, makes a big difference, because that's the person that's gonna be in charge of doing all of this. So sometimes they have different plans. They, sometimes they want to make changes. And typically, those meetings, they don't come out at that meeting, but that's when people start to hear their plans, and that's when the, the thought processes start to come up. I've had really good luck with good contractors, throwing my, my plans, almost, not, not the design plans, but the sequencing plans, almost throwing them out the window, because they met with the business owners. Business owners said, hey, if you could do this instead of that, we'd prefer it. So those are the kind of things that we'll, we'll try to help with. Uh, submittals. On any of these type of projects, it's a big item. Um, there's, there's normal things, concrete, normal material-type things, but here you've got street furniture, lights, trees. Where are the trees? All that type of thing. All of that is detailed out in four hundred and fifty pages of plans and special provisions to the DOT, but again, it doesn't go down to the level of color. It doesn't, you know, we have pictures and things, but they have to submit that to us, and then we approve. So that's another area that takes quite a bit of time to figure out, and we have to move fairly quickly. So what happens daily? Daily, we do daily activity inspection. You have a IDOT book that tells you exactly, down to the infinite little things, on things you have to, you have to take care of as far as items and materials. You have material testing. In this case, we'll have, um, Terricon doing the material testing, working underneath V and K, doing all of that. Then you have, we, we typically like to have a website where we would put on a weekly report. Here's what was done Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week. Here's what we're looking ahead to next week. And we like to have that weekly and have our, I usually have our main inspector fill that out, because that stuff changes day to day to day. We'll also put a contractor's schedule up. And that schedule, again, has to be detailed, but those schedules are generally difficult to pay attention to, because they have to have certain things there, and they will have a lot of items. So what we try to do is, is have that on there for people that really want to dive into the contractor's schedule, but these weekly, weekly reports with the weak, weak look ahead helps a lot of the normal, everyday person and the business owner. Somebody's down on Fifth Street saying, when are they getting to me? They can start paying attention to that, and we've had great success with that. Next thing is, we gotta pay attention to every quantity they're using, how, whatever materials they're using, how are they tying it to certain, uh, pay items? Do we have change orders? How are the change orders getting paid for? What's the approval process? And that's something, you know, I always like to tell the contractors, you can't just go changing something because your, your guy and my guy out in the field agreed to it. So we need to have something in writing, and generally, the city has to sign off before any change orders get moved forward. Then we have a monthly progress meetings every month to kind of summarize everything and kind of put it all together. And I think that's all I had. Say one more or not? No? That's it? Okay. So that's all I had, unless you guys have questions. That's kind of where I was gonna end.
Excited about getting it going?
I'm very excited. I, I am. I hope we get a great contractor, and I, I think it's gonna be a, an awesome project.
So Leo, I'm sorry, I had a question. The website updates would be posted where?
Typically, and we haven't done it yet, but typically, we like to put it on the city's website and have their own button, you know, that they, I don't know, it's called a button.
Tab link.
Their own tab or whatever that'll say, you know, Tiger Grant. Then I'd like to see Jefferson Street, Main Street, Riverfront. And then you can go to wherever you're looking for.
Sounds good.
All right.
Anybody else have any questions for Leo? Jesse, you have anything to add?
Bid dates, Leo?
Bid, bid dates? We have, the first one is in October, October twentieth.
Saw that one.
So now, once we're done with that one, then the riverfront goes out, and that's January twentieth. So it's good, good, another good comment on that. We'll end up with basically four phases. The Jefferson Main on the, on the streets, and North and South on the riverfront. Two contractors. One contractor on streets, one contractor on the riverfront. And we think that's the best way to manage this project.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Jim, do you have anything to add? No? Okay. Fantastic. Thanks, Leo. See you in the morning. Uh, number six, resolution approving second amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Burlington, Iowa, and Merge Burlington LLC. Jim?
We approved the original agreement back in April with Merge, and did a, the last meeting, we had the first amendment, which extended the closing date. It had been September four, extended it through the end of the year. If you look on here, uh, proposals that came in, the resolution would approve the proposals that we got received from Merge, which is the second page. It has some items that it's references. The terms out of that original agreement that it's modifying, uh, the minimum of improvements, they had been constructing a, uh, approximately a forty-seven thousand square foot facility. Uh, it was five floors and sixty-seven residential units and approximately forty-six hundred square feet of leasable commercial space. Uh, they've reduced it here to, and Eric has up a picture, and I think part of what they've done is, you see the green space that they have in back? I'm not sure that the original had that on there, and I think they've shortened the, the width of the building to provide this space on the uh, east side of the facility. Um, and it's, they're keeping at the same number of floors, but they are reducing the number of residential units by, by twenty. The commercial space by sixteen hundred square foot. And you want to walk through, it still shows the five floors. And the, it has, and it's, this is in the, in the packet, but it has an eye, an example of a couple of the looms that, rooms that they're looking to have in here. This, they receive this workforce housing. Is that what it was? Tax credits? Um, that they're using as their fun, their primary funding source to help with this project outside of ours. Uh, they did get those, um, in hand, so they're able to move forward. Uh, but because of the delay in getting those, they didn't get it in a regular round. Uh, it's moved not just the closing date from that September four to the end of the year that was in last week's, um, amendment, but here you see the target commencement date has moved, um, from, in item two of their proposal, from February one of this next year to November twenty, November first, uh, target commencement for construction date. That gives them the ability to have it occur anytime before then. Um, the next item that they were having was a demo. They, the original amendment, uh, agreement had uh, demo being completed by the end of December this year. Uh, they've moved that out to April first. Um, the, they've changed the estimated investment, and I'm not exactly sure why they, uh, increased it. They increased to seven million. Um, when we did the original agreement with them, we weren't looking at what their actual investment was. We've put a five million dollar figure in here to match a minimum assessment agreement. Uh, that minimum assessment agreement isn't changed, uh, in this amendment, but they're showing an estimate that they're looking to probably spend about seven million dollars. Um, the original agreement, the city was using up to two and a half million dollars of TIF financing towards this project, or providing up to two and a half million. Uh, two million of that was in a ten-year, uh, property tax rebate. Uh, that ten-year, uh, two million, up to two million dollar property tax rebate is not changed, still the same schedule. Um, so if they are six months behind, they may lose a payment or two on their rebate schedule. Uh, it may not impact them at all, depending on how they move forward with it. But the piece that is changing in here, uh, the rebate that we're, or the grant that we're providing them, in the original agreement, out of that two and a half million, it was four hundred and fifty thousand of a grant to them after demolition of the structures. Uh, they asked it to go up to five hundred thousand. Their bids were significantly higher than what they had anticipated. Uh, and that's still, the two million for TIF rebate over the ten years plus the five hundred thousand stays within the two point five million that we had had the hearing on and done a, the original agreement with, so it doesn't violate the terms of that. Um, and I think that's pretty much the changes that are encapsulated in this. Uh, was, was there another picture yet on that, Eric, or is that it? Okay.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Jim on that?
I'm just excited we're still moving forward.
I am too. I'm thrilled, actually. Okay, next up would be a resolution approving an agreement with Kahler Consulting LLC to assist in the city, assist the city in the search for a new police chief. Stephanie?
Hello. Well, in the packet was a memo. I just kind of, um, described what we did. I went out to bid to look at executive search firms, um, because this is such an important search for our city. Um, and I got the three quotes. Gov HR was at twenty thousand plus expenses, Mulder and Associates fourteen thousand, and Kahler Consulting was thirteen thousand plus expenses. Um, I did include in the packet the proposal from Jeff Kahler. Um, I did speak to him on the phone, going through the process of how, um, the police search that he's recommending now is a little bit different than we did the last two searches with, um, Dennis and Doug, where we did more of an assessment center. We had, you know, other police chiefs come in, and they did a whole-day event. So this is more, um, interview-based with community leaders, um, citizens, the council, department heads. Um, but he said that's what the climate is, is calling for now, um, and it seemed to be working well. They've done a lot of virtual things, if that's what we want to do too. Um, but, um, kind of what he's suggesting, I think we would have, um, places where we could do in-person interviews, you know, at the auditorium and even in here, as long as we, you know, don't have as many people. But uh, my recommendation is that we hire Jeff. I know that there is a timetable in there that it, this does take a few months to go through the whole process. You know, he'll want to do the research first, interview people, to get to see what the community is looking for. Um, he is a ex-police chief himself. Um, his resume's in there, and if anybody has any questions, I can...
Any questions?
I checked out a couple of his references. They look pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Stephanie. Thanks for handling that. Uh, next up, uh, Jim, did you have something to add on that? I saw you kind of angling.
Angling.
Angling, angling.
Well, I was just gonna say, we haven't used, done this in the past. We've used an outside firm. I think Mulder is who we actually used when we... Was it Kahler when we did the assessment center? To develop our whole assessment center process. It wasn't this extensive of, of a process that we did at that time with the consultant's help. It was, I think it was more like a five thousand dollar expenditure to really just put the structure in place. This is a completely different structure, and I think that at the minimum, we need to redo the structure. Use, having an outside firm such as him come in and help with it, just, it, as you kind of mentioned, there's been a change in climate. It impacts how, how we need to make sure that we're showing the community that we're taking an effort to try to be thorough about this and have a little bit, a little... taking an effort to try to be thorough about this and have a little bit, level of objectivity, outside viewpoint of how we're doing things and make sure we have other voices heard.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on that, gang? No?
So when we have a headhunter like that or this LLC, do we, what if they don't have a successful candidate that we like? Do we still pay him for his time or how does that work?
I think that his, he puts in that contract that he'll bring forward, a list of, a vetted list of, I think fif-
Oh, I thought it was five.
Maybe it is five. I thought it was 15.
Up to five finalists.
So he's bringing forward a list of five finalists that are qualified. Now, if we have a process where we go through that and we are not able to get it, I think we'll have to have a discussion about it. But that's, his guarantee is on that, the deliverable of presenting five qualified candidates. That doesn't necessarily mean that-
We're gonna love them all.
You're gonna love them all.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Number eight, resolution approving the purchase of property locally, or located at 520 South Main Street. Jesse, you looking sharp tonight?
Trying. Trying my best. It was chilly out this morning, so grabbed the jacket. Jesse Howes, city engineer. I was just, Nick had asked me to maybe explain why we're purchasing this property a little bit more to you guys. Essentially, I'll start with kind of describing what we have out there. As you can see here, coming down Angular Street, there is a, I believe I made that a green line. Gravity flow, I'm colorblind, so I can't see all the colors. I can't remember what color I made it. So the green line is actually gravity flow. And right where Angular meets Main Street is where this property is, on the east side of that intersection. And then there's a second parcel that runs north and south just behind that old car dealership there. So it runs gravity to that intersection and then it actually flows north from that intersection to the Market Street lift station. From there, it's pumped back to the south into the sewage treatment plant. One of the things we kind of have identified with all of our separation is, once we're completely separated, we still have sanitary sewer overflows in wet weather. This would be a perfect spot for an equalization tank and/or a lift station in the event that we go down that sewer separation route, which, you know, we're mandated to do right now. So it's gonna be a perfect spot for that and we'll be able to even, you know, reduce our overflows with an equalization tank there were we to jump into that project right away. It's more of a long-term purchase. We have a motivated seller now, so we're just taking advantage of that.
What are we, what were we buying it for, 25,000?
It was 25, yeah, and it appraised for 27,500.
Okay. Is the concrete making facility that's still there, is that gone?
Most of the stuff associated with that is there. There's still an old brick scale house that's there. I don't know that we do anything with it right away. We could demo it, but I don't know that we have much urgency to do so.
Were you asking, is it still in operation?
No, it's not.
Jesse, when we put the tiger in with the, some of the permeable pavers, will that reduce some of the overflow or, I know the rain incidents we have, it just dumps anymore? So maybe not.
Yeah. In that specific area, not so much because this is coming from that angular basin and it goes clear back to, oh, past the Hy-Vee and up into the neighborhood.
I see the river there and I think Riverfront.
Yeah. Most of that's taken place just immediately to the north of where we'd be purchasing this property.
Okay. I see it now, even a little thingy. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Number nine.
Can I just say something?
Yes. Go ahead.
I mean, as we talk about this, for, I can't put the numbers correctly. The plant is 22 million gallons a day that can handle-
20.8.
20.8. That's an exact number. Our wet weather flow theoretically that comes through our system, would it be a little bit higher than that?
Yes.
Would it be higher than 40 million gallons in a day?
I would say there's a good chance of that.
Good chance that we're more than twice. So we are gonna, we're doing a whole bunch of different things that are gonna pull off a couple of hundred thousand gallons in a day. And each of those, whether it's the, doing the permeable pavers downtown or whatever else, it's just a piece of, of some things that we need to do over a period of 20 to 30 years to try to change the flow level that goes to the plant. This is one, whether it's an equalization bank, or equalization tank, or a lift station that takes some of the flow that normally goes up to the Market Street lift station, which is overwhelmed, put in a second lift station here, so you have two lift stations taking flow down to the plant that are, that are able to address the overflows to some extent. I mean, we just don't know how that these things get mixed and matched and we're gonna be doing a lot of incremental things over the years, so.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jim. Number nine, a resolution approving appointment of an acting police chief. You could've stayed up here.
So this resolution, as we go through the process of honoring our current police chief who retires at the end of the month, we need someone to bridge the gap between then and whenever we're able to finish the process of bringing on a new police chief full-time. I did speak with Major Klein, asked if he would be willing to step forward and be the interim police chief, and he has graciously agreed. And I wholeheartedly recommend him filling that position for the interim.
Okay. Any questions? Jim, I assume that we're going to properly compensate Major for filling in?
He said he's just happy with the job.
He is? Okay, good. That works for us.
Thanks, Major.
He just wants a change in his name tag.
We typically provide a 5% bump in these types of situations.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Now we're moving on to the proposed consent agenda. First is resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Did anybody see anything there? Anything special on that, Eric, we need to know about?
One, then you'll see continually defined center.
Okay. Secure in it? Okay.
What are we doing about that? Is there anything we can do about that? Because that has been on every nuisance filing that we've had since, I think I've been on council.
And is, can anybody get a hold of the guy? That's the other thing.
It's listed for sale. It's $500 or $600 every time we mow it. It's $200 to $500 every time we secure it, which is monthly. It's gone back to taxes. I think there's $30,000 in back taxes and assessments.
I mean, nobody's gonna buy it.
If we were to acquire, we'd have to have a plan to address it, which is half million dollars of demolition or something, I guess. It's something we'd have to look into more, but that'd be a council decision.
It's one that our, and it's-
It's one we could acquire through that process.
This is one that our building department would like to do that on. It's been brought forward as a request from them over the last year after we got the care center done this last year. We could bring you one of these projects every year, the size or larger. It's just where's the funding gonna come? And again, I haven't talked about it yet, but survey, we're gonna be doing a survey this week. It's gonna be going out on our website. I'm not sure how else we might be pushing it out, but I know that we asked the partnership for some help on getting this survey developed. As we are going through the goal-setting process, the staff put together some thoughts in terms of what are some priorities to look at for the next couple of years. Council put forward priorities that they thought were things that we needed to address. We ended up with a list of close to 30 of those types of items, but we can't do all of those in two years. So we're asking for some input from the public too in that process. One of the items that's on that list is putting more money into this type of a program, getting rid of buildings in disrepair, more into demolition, into rehab, et cetera. Encourage people to provide their input over the next couple of weeks. We're hoping to have that survey out September 17 through the end of the month, so about two weeks. And then that'll give us a chance to compile that information, provide it to the council as you do your goal-setting session on October 13. Out of a list of 27, again, we can't do them all, but we want the public, anyone who takes that survey, to put in what they see as their top five issues out of those. And we'll try to prioritize, and it'll give you the chance to figure out what are people saying we need to prioritize. Well, they're gonna, everyone's gonna have a little bit different thought process. Leo was here talking about the river, the Tiger Grant, and he showed all those nice trees on there. 200 trees? 400 trees? Two. Somebody's gotta take care of those. And you can only stretch your, everything you do like that stretches your staff. Concern from Eric's department is, how do we take care of those? Well, there, I think one of the questions had to do with filling a role, maybe on the arborist side.
Sure, exactly.
And, yeah, green infrastructure for, some of that was more from engineering's perspective for stormwater. Well, staff has a little bit higher interest in that and concern that they're pushing than what the general public may ever think about because it's not top of mind to them.
The more trees in your community, the lower your cancer risk.
So, and so you'll have to think, where do I comparatively weigh out you as a group as you're trying to develop your list of priorities, the different opinions on this? And then as you think, Matt, about this structure that is a nice or and a problem, $500,000, where are we gonna come up with the funds? And are we gonna prioritize it over the other things? So that's something to keep in mind as we move forward.
And that'll be on the city webpage, Jim?
We'll have it on the city webpage and I'm not sure if we'll get it pushed through the partnership too or not. Yes? So we'll have it in a couple of places.
Okay. Good.
Good. Number two is a resolution, well, back to number one. Mow your yards, people. It's ridiculous. Number two is resolution approving final acceptance and final payment and release of retention monies for 2019 North End Odor Control Project, Burlington Water Works. Hi, Don. Welcome.
Okay. You have before you the council item memo to the city manager along with the resolution, which is recommending that final accept of the project effective September 4th. Make final payment of $93,613.59. That excludes the 5% retainage, which I guess according to Iowa code would be released after 30 days from the date of approval. So after that council meeting, that would be released. It's for the odor control project that took place at the wastewater treatment plant. It's, five air scrubbers were put in at the north end handling the off gases that are coming off of the wastewater as it comes into the plant. This particular calendar year, during the summer, we had some very dry weather and some very hot weather. There was a lot of odors associated with that wastewater. As the city continues separating the sewer system, I believe that that situation can worsen simply because the flows through the sewers will be lower, there'll be a concentration of solids. And so we feel that it was prudent to put this air scrubbing system at the north end of the plant. It's been online now. We've, we as staff have had to have a little bit of a learning curve. We've historically left garage doors open and service doors open on the Headworks Building at the north end of the plant, which in fact can affect the air balance within that area. And we found out that, well, you need to keep all those doors closed for this system to work properly. So it seems to be working well for us right now.
Okay. Any questions, gang? Sounds good. We already got the work done. We got the payment. Thanks, Don. Number three, resolution approving fiscal year 2019, 2020, street financial report, road use tax. Stephanie?
Sure. So this is a report that we annually have to do for the state of Iowa. Basically just recaps what's going in and out of our road use fund and then what capital projects we've done in this past fiscal year, street-related. We have to list all our debt that we've borrowed for street projects and also all our equipment. So the report is in a little different format this year. It doesn't look as nice as it used to because they created a new report, but this is what we could print off the system and what we need to approve. It's due June, or I'm sorry, September 30th, so I'll file it with the state once we approve it.
And everything looks good to you?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Number four, resolution updating the personnel manual salary schedule for non-union employees. Please.
So this schedule, what we did, once you approved that Nick could hire a transit manager, we went and looked at our non-union, when we did the non-union compensation study, they gave us a tool that if we added positions, we go through, answer these questions, we score them and see where they fall with the rest of the positions within the city. So as I, Nick answered the questions, we scored it, it fell into the non-union range seven. And so I also did comp study with, I sent it out to like six of our comparable cities. I had response from three of them. So the range that it fell into was that 59,000 to 77,000. And Clinton's response was real close to ours. Marshall Towns was a little bit higher, their salaries were higher. Mason Cities was slightly higher too, but that person is also their safety manager. And then Atom was, it was pretty close to ours, but they just outsourced their transit system as of July 1st. They had another company take it over. So I feel like, when I looked at the comps, that were real close, putting this position in that seven range. And so that's what this salary schedule does, adds that in there, so you approve it.
Okay.
I feel like that's high. You think that's-
A lot of responsibility, a lot of hard-
It's comparable to what, comparable to what regional planning's paying.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, because I did check that out, so. Thank you, Stephanie. Six, we'll set it, set dates for public hearings, October 5th, 2020.
We got five.
Oh, did I miss five? I did miss five. That's the one you had me sign, too.
We can skip over it, but yeah.
Number five, resolution approving submission of Title VI program for Burlington Urban Service Transit System.
So this is a report that's due to the Iowa Department of Transportation every three years. So you'll, you'll see, we just have to go through, there's obviously the application that we fill out and Nick helps me with the information on that. John, like he said, had signed some of these Title VI assurances. We'll get them posted with the signatures once this program's approved. Basically, we just have to show to the state that we are communicating with the public about our transit system, that we offer assistance if somebody doesn't speak English, that they can call us and get assistance. If somebody has a complaint, it's posted exactly what they can, you know, how to file a complaint with us and then contact me or turn it in to me. But basically, we just want to make sure that we're not discriminating and getting as much information out to the public as we can.
So what do we have for someone that speaks another language?
We have the program that's in here that, so they would call in and Amy would, we contract with this big, the big word is what it call, so that we would call them and then we would translate through them. So.
Thank you.
And we haven't had, I know I keep an annual report, we, in the last, you know, three years, we haven't had anybody make any Title VI complaints or any complaints for the transit system.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or concerns on that? Thank you. Now, set a date for public hearings, October 5th, 2020. First up will be a consideration of an ordinance amending section 7, 3.04, special speed restrictions of chapter 73, speed regulations of Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anything on that yet? No? I don't think so. Nope. And then B is consideration of an ordinance amending section 123.01, permit required of the chapter 123 special events permits of the Burlington Municipal Code. Anything we want to address on that yet? No. On discussion items, I did talk to, Linda brought it up, and I did talk to Nick today. I'd like to move that to the next work session if we can, to give, give us some time to look at that. So if that's okay with everybody on council?
I'm good.
Okay? All right. And number two is appointments. I'm trying to get there on my packet. Who's our appointment? Okay. We have an appointment, Construction Board of Appeals, Commission Member Bruce Mopin's term expired 6/15/2020. It is requested the council consider reappointing Bruce Mopin to a new three-year term, which will expire 6/15/2023. Does anybody have any- Does anybody have any questions on that? Is there any other discussion items before council today? Staff, Eric, Don? Jesse? Stephanie? Fire marshal Crooks? Major?
No, sir.
Thanks for your donation of time on that, by the way. Jim?
Several of them I've already mentioned. Reminder, those that are participating in the league meeting, it's online. So I think a couple of you are signed up, so make sure you make your sessions here Wednesday through Friday. The only, well, one thing I would say, thanks to Jesse. Glad he is here and making it through this process. He has lost the majority of his staff. They turn out an awful lot of work, and the volume that's gone through there has significantly increased since Jesse has been in that role. But right now, he's without pretty much all of his daily folks. We just brought someone on, on a contract basis, starting today, to help to fill in. It's really a bonus that we have the ability to do that, that there was someone that was available that is a high-quality person that we could rely on to do that. But we struggle. You just mentioned pay for transit. We had someone who left here to go to the private sector and make about 50% more than he's making here with us. Would that be about accurate? Maybe not quite 50, but with bonus, with bonus, it's close. So it's, it's rather discouraging where, when we have some good folks that come in and do a good job, and then they move on. And just to see Jesse be able to make that operation continue to move forward, and hopefully not get too discouraged as we go through the process of transitioning. Just want to put a thank you out and make sure that you just recognize, he puts a lot of time in and makes a lot of things happen, and some of it is really kind of hard for it to happen at times like this. The only other thing I wanted to talk about was DESCOM. We're, we've had meetings in regards to what the structure of DESCOM looks like when the current 28E expires next year. As the, one of the things that came up, had a meeting today in regards to potential change and how that structure would look. We did have a presentation from an attorney who talked about, one of the items that we've talked about is a possibility, seeing that funded through the Emergency Management Commission, and really put a lot of weight and validity behind the idea that there, that is a perfectly acceptable, acceptable way to do it, and the authority is there for the commission to do that, make that decision on their own. However, we have a DESCOM that's a 28E between multiple entities, and trying to build that into that relationship, and how is that moving forward, is a difficult conversation that's still going on. There are a few different alternatives that are being bandied about, and it's one that, we've got a couple of representatives here who are on that. I think that it's something that we need to just be partic, very particular, that we make sure that we do what's in the best interest of the community. And, you know, we got to look at the community, the whole county, but we want to make sure that we don't lose track of where the city fits into that, making sure that, that we're looking out for the best long-term needs of all of our citizens. I don't know if there's anything more you'd want to add on that, but.
I would agree. I mean, we're, we're still at a crossroads on several, on several fronts on that, and it's-
And I know we're very antsy on it.
Yeah, because it needs to be resolved. So I, in two weeks, we'll, we'll have a decision one way or another, and we'll see what's going on, so. Anything, Matt? Anything else to add?
No, no, I mean, not at all. I think, I think the proper discussions on that border are taking place, and have resolutions here for the entities shortly.
Yep.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Counsel, you have anything, anything for discussion? Linda?
Tomorrow, civic music kicks off at Burlington Memorial Auditorium with a group called Six Appeal, S-I-X Appeal, 7:00 PM. You can purchase individual tickets for $20. It's going to be outside. It's going to be nice weather, and what a great way to enjoy this beautiful late summer weather.
All right. Anybody else?